Aaron, we'll invite you to start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about the delay. We had an executive session prior to this meeting, so that's why you saw us a little late. A roll call, please.
Strand?
Here.
Garrick?
Here.
Grinberg?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here. Boy, we got a lot of new employees coming into our city of Fargo. The fire department recently welcomed five new employees who will be working through an eight-week academy and then a 10-month on-the-job training schedule. Sixteen fire department members are along with the fourteen from Grand Forks, Bismarck, and Minot that are attending a training class this week on responding to structural collapse incidents. The funding for this training was provided by the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services through federal, state, homeland security programs. The instructors for the class are from many places around the country who have responded to numerous natural non-maid disasters around the world. Some have been in Houston and Florida. This is a really good course for our team to learn how to get into structural collapses and how to resuscitate, catch, or rescue people as well as take care of the fires. In health, Ruth has Connie Peterson. She's a maternal-child health nurse and nurse-home visitor who retired after 27 years at the Fargo CAS Public Health. John Strand, she's really done a lot of patients and seen a lot of patients. She touched council's lives through her time at public health, and she will be missed by her colleagues and patients. Public health also reminds everybody that flu season is approaching, and one of the best ways preventing or lessening the impact of influenza is through annual flu vaccines. The flu vaccine is recommended for most people six months of age and older. Commissioner Strand will be one of the first, right, John?
I will be.
Library. The area library's One Book One Community Reading Project is underway. This year's title is Hotel on the Corner of Bitter and Sweet by Jamie Ford. Events for the project kicked off last week, and other upcoming related events include Culture and Colors of China on September 17, a screening of the documentary Beyond Barbed Wire: Japanese Americans in Minnesota on September 24, and we have an author visit with Jamie Ford on October 24 at Concordia College. The reading project is a partnership with Fargo Moorhead, West Fargo, Concordia, MSUM, and NDSU libraries. The other thing that the library is doing right now is a strategic project in which we're having some people come in, and it's interesting to note that the highest, one of the highest count users of our library is millennials, which a lot of them are utilizing our library. Only bad thing is winter hours have started at the library, and on Sundays they're open noon until 6 o'clock. Planning. We always get a lot of comments about NDSU, and there's a lot of new housing development taking place at NDSU. A building permit was issued for a 395-bed resident hall on NDSU campus. The plans have also been submitted for the city for replacement of university village housing with 270 to 349 new apartments. Construction of that first building is expected to fall this year with 86 units. Work is also under use, underway in the project for 104 housing units, that NDSU foundation property at 1600 Block North University Drive. So they're going to add a lot of housing to our community without necessarily going into the community, which hope gives some relief to Roosevelt. Police Department. We had four new recruits come in today. Chief found out he got hearing aids, and he can hear himself better, so it's harder to mispronounce people's names. So it was a good exercise for him. The police department's working on a radio system that will end in 2018 because the current system no longer will be technically supported. Because of this, many of the public safety officials have spent time with the two legislative sessions trying to find a way and to fund a statewide radio system and make it affordable for all municipalities. Work was done in the meantime to work with a proposal with to join Minnesota Radio System, and we're now approved to join the system and use their controller out of Detroit Lakes, which saves us about 1.5 million. And Chief, that's something that can go forward that will be helpful to us in this community. The new project for all the radios statewide, is that 150 million?
I think it's closer to 170.
170 million. So Chief is hoping oil prices go up. I think that's how you're going to solve that. So. I just want to talk about Redwood Farmers Market downtown Fargo. It returned this summer for its third season. The market is open every Saturday through October 28 on Broadway and Fourth Avenue North. I stopped by the market last weekend. It's obvious it's been very successful. We see a lot of people downtown. We see a lot of activity outside. Last year, they had more than 50,000 people visit the market, and we're sure that the numbers will be higher this year. And if any of you've gone before, they didn't have many vendors. They got like 60 vendors now. There's a lot of stuff going on. There's beer, wine. There's a band. So there's a lot of numbers. And you can tell the students are back in town because there's a lot more people. I encourage everybody to stop by and take advantage of the wide variety of local grown food, canned and baked goods, fresh flowers, and more. There's also food trucks, art demonstrations, live music, and a playground for the children. So it's a good place when the fall comes on to go. So we'll go on to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda, taking items nine and 11 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, and adding an additional item to the end of the regular agenda to provide an update on Wi-Fi downtown?
It's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 28 regular meeting?
It's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any changes or changes to the minutes discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through 39 excluding items nine and 11?
It's a move.
Second.
Second. Pepcorn and Goring. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
We'll go to the regular agenda. Kent, yours isn't very long, I don't think, right? Recognition of National Payroll Week and the efforts of the city payroll processing team. Pineets Director Ken Costin.
Good evening, Commissioners. Last week, the American Payroll Association celebrated National Payroll Week, and basically, the city of Fargo is a member of the American Payroll Association. They're a good reference tool for us, and one of the things their goals that they do is to help workers understand and maintain and manage their paychecks. So we just thought it was appropriate to extend some recognition to the city of Fargo's teams that work on payroll activities that includes finance, human resources, and all of the departments that have a payroll processor. We currently crank out about 32,000 paychecks a year, which is significant, and we seldom get a complaint about our service levels. So everybody's being paid properly. And so with that, we just thought we should start recognizing the effort of this group because it's a large group, and they do good work with regard to the payroll. So the suggested motion is just to recognize the efforts of our teams, including human resources, the auditors, and all of the departmental payroll processors. Going forward in the future years, we would hope to have some more robust activities and recognition-type events, but we just thought it was important for you to be aware of that first week of September.
Is there a motion?
It's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kent, I think your team does a great job, and it is well of all of our people. With the Fargo Dome coming on board, we almost have 1,800 people we process now. Is that correct? Close to that? Okay, very good. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Those are the easy ones. Let's go to the public hearings and see how agreeable you guys are. Okay, it's a BMD, BNG Edition, 3285 47th Street South. Approval recommended by Planning Commission 9517. It's a zoning change from limited commercial to conditional overlay to general office with conditional overlay. So first reading of the rezoning. Donald Crest to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Crest of the Department of Planning and Development. As the mayor has stated, this item is a zoning change for Lot 2, Block 1 of the BNG Edition. That's located on 33rd Avenue South there and 47th Street South, 3285 47th Street South in the Brant Crossing neighborhood. The property is currently zoned LC, limited commercial, with a conditional overlay. The lot is undeveloped. The applicant wishes to rezone the property to GO, general office, while keeping that same existing conditional overlay in order to accommodate a new office building. The property is bounded by limited commercial, which is the pinkish, and then across the street is SR4, single-dwelling residential. No public comments have been received. The proposed zoning has been reviewed by city departments and recommended for approval by the planning commission. The recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. The applicant, Nate Volmuth of Pace's Lodging, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Donald, is that just a water retention bond next to it? Can you go to the pitcher?
Yes, sir. That's a detention.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this rezoning? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion by the Commissioners? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious about the height shift.
Yes, sir.
Not that I'm opposed to this, but I'm just curious if 20 more feet will make a difference to the residential neighborhood nearby, going from 35-foot-high buildings to 57 feet?
I believe, and perhaps Mr. Volmuth can address this, the larger part of the building is farther away from the, the taller part of the building is farther away from the residential. It's not 57 feet at the property line. It steps back, as I understand it. So, but that's what the GO would allow, is a higher height overall.
How far setback would that be?
I don't, Mr. Volmuth, how far back are you going to be with that, 57 feet?
Thank you, Commissioners. Nate Volmuth with Pace's Lodging. With the right-of-way, the right-of-way there is 100 feet, I believe. Then there's a parking lot, and then the building starts. And so from the property line, it's probably 120 feet. So from the actual homes, it's probably, I think we measured at 290 feet.
Okay.
From where a house starts to where the 57-foot mark is on the building.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item B, Silver Leaf Third Edition, 2801 64th Avenue South and 2748 Samuel Drive South. Approval recommended by the planning commission on 7/6/17. Zoning change from agricultural to single-dwelling residential. First reading of the rezoning ordinance and a plat of Silver Leaf Third Edition.
Yes, Commissioners. As the mayor has stated, this is a zoning change in minor subdivision. Ordinarily, minor subdivisions would be on the consent agenda, but since this goes along with the zoning change, you're seeing it as a public hearing. The subdivision is part of Auditor's Lot 8 in the southeast quarter, Section 2, Township 139 North, Range 49 West, and Lot 3, Block 1 of the Silver Leaf Second Edition. This property is located at 2801 64th Avenue South and 2748 Samuel Drive South in the Maple Valley neighborhood. The minor plat, as you see, the lot, Auditor's Lot 8 is zoned agricultural, which is the gray, and then the Silver Leaf subdivision here is zoned SR2. So that would be the zone change that it's going to. We'll just show this on the plat. What the plat does is take a piece of the Auditor's Lot 8, zoned agricultural, and adds it to that existing lot in Silver Leaf. So it just makes that lot bigger, and thus that additional piece has to be, have its zoning changed to match the existing zoning in the Silver Leaf Edition. The proposed, staff has received no comments. The proposed zoning and minor subdivision have been reviewed by city staff and recommended for approval by the planning commission. The recommendation for approval is shown in your, on the screen and in your staff report. The applicant, Doug Johnson, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to address the commission? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
item B, Goring. Any discussion? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Donald, I'm just curious, how many single-family residences will be in this, if you have 5.4 units per acre? And how many, I'm just trying to sort of, how many will there be potentially?
Well, there'll just be one on this lot.
That's just one?
Yes, sir, yeah. All it's doing is making that lot a little bigger.
It's bigger.
Because as you see, if I may, Commissioner, this is, this is a lot that has sort of a tail on it, kind of a, it's a, it's a lot that's not conveniently configured. So this adds a little more to it, make it a little more of a usable lot. That's all we're really doing, is a big lot line adjustment.
I got it. Thank you.
So there, there will only be one house on that lot, sir.
Very good. Roll call vote?
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item C, Appeal of the Board Adjustment Decision Regarding a Variance of 3931 and 3949, 37th Avenue South to Law Proposed Building to be constructed to a lower elevation than it otherwise be required by the Fargo City's Floodproofing Code, as referenced in Article 2106 of the Fargo Municipal Code, denied by the Board of Adjustment on 8/22/17. Aaron Nelson to explain.
Good afternoon. So as you mentioned, item 41C is an appeal of a Board of Adjustment decision regarding a requested variance of the floodplain management standards, which are outlined in Article 2106 of the Fargo Municipal Code. More specifically, this is a variance request to the city's floodproofing ordinance. This appeal was filed by Nick Dietrich on behalf of the property owner, and Mr. Dietrich is present should you have any questions for the applicant. Before I dive into my presentation here, just quickly want to note a couple of things. Since this is a request for a variance of the floodproofing code, that section of code is actually administered by the Fargo building official, and so, planning department staff works very closely with the building inspections department, as well as the engineering department, on these types of variances because they are so well-versed in our, in helping draft and implement the city's floodproofing standards. So I'm here just to give a brief background on the topic, and then I'll hand it off to the building inspections and engineering department for some additional details as well. So as far as background materials go, the property in question is located at 3931 and 3949, 37th Avenue South. This is a site of an existing manufacturing business, Solid Comfort. They have two existing buildings on the site today, and they are proposing to add a third building on their site, shown on the site plan here in front of you in blue. And their intent is for this third building to butt up against the two existing buildings, to sort of link them together. Their intent is for this to be a separate standalone building, and they would kind of touch similar to buildings in the downtown area. The proposed building site, however, is located within the city's 41-foot water surface elevation inundation area, and it is also located within the current FEMA special flood hazard area, also known as the 100-year floodplain. And so because of this, the proposed building is required to meet the city's floodproofing requirements. However, the applicant is, does wish to build the building at similar elevations to the existing buildings, which were both constructed prior to this area coming into the 100-year floodplain. And so the applicant has requested a variance in order to build the building with a lower elevation than would otherwise be required by the floodproofing code. This requested variance was originally heard by the Board of Adjustment on July 25 of this year. The board decided or acted to continue that application to the August 22 meeting in order to give the applicant some additional time to consider some alternative development or design options for their site. Subsequently, on August 22, the requested variance was denied by the Board of Adjustment due to failure to receive the required four votes necessary, or the supermajority necessary for a variance to be granted.
What was the vote, Aaron?
So that was a three-to-two vote in favor of approval. But again, the variance requires four to five votes in order for the Board of Adjustment to pass. So that's just a quick overview of why it's in front of you here today. The applicant did appeal the Board of Adjustment's decision, and so this is coming before you as to consider whether or not to approve the variance. Couple of other things I just want to quick touch on, just the specifics of the variance itself. It's probably been a while since a similar application has come before the city commission. So there are three requirements in regards to the building elevation within the floodproofing code. Requirement for the lowest opening on the building, the fill around the building, as well as the fill within 15 feet of the building. In all these cases, there are requirements that it be, lowest opening, for example, needs to be at least 1.2 feet above that water surface elevation inundation area, which is imposed by the city, or two feet above the FEMA-based floodplain elevation, which is obviously the federally designated floodplain. In all these cases, the applicant is requesting to be below these minimum elevations. And specifically, what I want to point out and what staff wants to emphasize is that the request, not only does it violate the city's 41-foot elevation requirements, but also the FEMA-based floodplain elevation. And so past variance requests, for the most part, they've all been related to the city's kind of self-imposed 41-foot elevation. This would be the first business to propose an elevation lower than the 100-year floodplain. And then the lastly, I think the last thing I want to point out is, as outlined in the staff report, the review criteria, as outlined in Article 2106 of the municipal code, is outlined within the staff report there. Staff has found that, does not feel that all the variance criteria have been satisfied, and specifically, staff is, suggests that the variance is being requested as a matter of convenience, and that an exceptional hardship does not exist since the proposed building could be constructed to the applicable floodproofing requirements. So ultimately, staff is recommending denial of the proposed variance. I'll be here for questions, but I do want to hand it off to our building inspections and engineering department for some additional detail.
So when you say the Board Adjustment voted three-two, they voted three-two with what your recommendation is, or they voted for a variance?
Yeah, so they voted twice. The first vote was, there was a motion made to deny the variance. That failed, two to three. And then there was a follow-up vote for approving the variance, and that vote was three in favor of approval, two opposed to the.
Thank you.
So it kind of was denied by default.
Evening, Commissioners. Jody Bertrand, Stormwater Division Engineer. As Aaron kind of commented, most everything he spoke with, we agree with. We believe the denial of permit or the variance should be the action tonight. Doing some further research kind of into FEMA's view of the way that ordinances are granted, possibly under their criteria. They've got three that they kind of move forward with that are typical, other than convenience. The first being if the lot is very small, maybe a half-acre lot, not a large impact, those can be approved. If we're repairing historic buildings coming through, if there's flood damage, would be the second one. And then if they're actually functionally dependent, which you might think that's probably what we would have here with some manufacturing, but that's actually one of the exceptions to that rule. What the, they kind of call out as the functionally dependent is actually like a water use or something, where you're in a shipyard and you've only got so much space to use. So in FEMA's eyes, I guess, those are the three criteria they would use that could be approved by, in their eyes, without having, I guess, any other further disruption.
I think the Commissioner would want to know, as it looks like three buildings together, is there anything functionally that the three do together? So if at the same level, are there different?
I believe that's kind of what their purpose was, that they can have easy access to all three of the buildings, zipping through. I guess in engineering's eyes, and I think building codes, you know, there could be a way to put ramps in there and, you know, have the buildings 20 or 30 feet, depending on what the slope would be. And then you could still have the elevation requirements in that met, along with not imposing or putting other infrastructure within floods or, I guess, rainfall jeopardy.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Jody, I'm just curious, and this is just off the top of my mind. I recall, I believe, 300 Lime had a similar issue of elevation, and yet that project was already underway. And I remember, if I remember, Prairie St. John's also had a request for a variance relative to elevations. If I recall, both of those passed with a split vote from the commission, if I recall. Could you help me understand the difference between these projects?
300 Lime.
And the issues at hand?
Yep. 300 Lime, actually, what they came forward with is we've got our self-imposed 41-foot elevation plus the 1.2 feet. So what they came in with, they were like three or four inches below what that freeboard elevation was. So what this property is actually proposing to do is actually build below the base flood elevations, I mean, like two and a half feet lower than everything else. So it's rather significant. It's not just two inches, which you guys have approved previously. The other case for Prairie St. John's, what that one was, is they actually had an existing building to build on that site. They actually made concessions where they went and they raised all of their electrical and everything up to the second floor. Their actually flood risk was actually improved by eight to 10 feet above what it previously is. So they're reducing risk along with reducing future damages. And the third thing with Prairie St. John's is that they've actually got a certified levy, which actually takes them out of the BFE, or the base flood elevation, which this property does not.
If I might just continue, Jody, the, if I recall, Prairie, 300 Lime signed a letter of immunity, or holding the city immune if there were damages. Is that a variable in a situation where somebody's varying from the elevations that, or is this just too big of a difference in elevation to have them sign off an immunity, not hold harmless or whatever it is to the city?
I guess I wouldn't want to comment on the hold harmless portion of it, but.
Well, it isn't exactly.
Eric, can you move your mic closer to you?
I don't believe it's exactly a factor for consideration in granting a variance, but were you to decide to grant a variance, that certainly is something that might be in a helpful condition to have.
Do we have that with Lime?
Yes.
I think we do, yes.
Okay. Somebody else testify, or you two, it?
I think Bruce wanted to just comment on one of the structures and conformance and a 50% rule that we have on, in the audience.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Bruce with the inspections Department. A little about all three of us, too. We each have different responsibilities for the floodplain management. Engineering has their own criteria. Inspections deals more with buildings and everything from the building and inside, and planning's in charge of the variance. So we're all little pieces and parts. I'm here for a couple of reasons. One, to talk about FEMA substantial improvement. We have a slide? You want to hand it out to? FEMA also has some issues with substantially improving buildings. And I tried to think of a good example. Once, I think it was about 15 or 20 years ago, I was watching 60 Minutes, and they talked about a celebrity having an oceanfront property that was taken away by a hurricane and allowed to be rebuilt. And I think it was rebuilt under FEMA funds. And it happened again. So it was the third time it was rebuilt. Things have changed over the years. FEMA does not want people improving properties that are in the FEMA floodway, flood zone. And so they've created criteria, and one of them is, the first sheet you're looking at, does say, I included the definition of substantial improvement, which reads, "Any reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition, or other improvement of a structure where the cost equals or exceeds 50% of the market value." So they made a breakpoint. Anytime you spend 50% on your building, it's actually saying you need to bring it up to current codes. So even if you didn't do an addition and had $100,000 billing, and we're going to spend $50,000, you would bring that building into compliance at the time. However you had to do it, the designer would be hired and figure out how to do it. It also talks about additions. This addition is well over the 50%. So since it's touching the other two buildings, we had to look at that. And it does meet the criteria, over 50%. The proponent has, or the applicant has also asked for the option to build a detached building. We've discussed that, and we would look at that. The building would have to stand on its own and still meet the floodproof criteria in our eyes, and look at it like it's a standalone building. So I would ask that, they've been told they need to get a designer to design that so that it complies, in our eyes, as a standalone building that's still next to the existing building. So the next page is our floodproof code, and you can see down on the bottom, Page 1, it references the FEMA requirements for additions, alterations, repairs that exceed 50% do need to come into conformance with the complete floodproof requirements. So this is the first time it's ever happened, where a project of this scope and size has come to us. And we can understand the ramifications. If anybody else in that area did come in with a similar project, this would come up.
So do you recommend deny?
All three departments. All three departments recommend denial, based on creating a precedence to what would happen in the future. You need to look at each project as it comes in here. We need to create ordinance requirements for each project as we see, as it stands right now. So this project does not meet the criteria. And the separate building thing, I'd like to leave that till we see an architect and how he designs it, and then we would be allowed to review and approve that.
So one President wishes to speak to this variance? Owners aren't here? You can come up and speak. Commissioners, I want to hear from you. We've, we've recommended denial, so why would you say we shouldn't do that?
My name is Nick Dietrich with Dietrich Construction, representing Solid Comfort. These guys did a good job of describing all the materials. One thing that wasn't talked about by perhaps Bruce is that we are looking at doing floodproof construction on the standalone building. Utilizing flood barriers for all the overhead doors. So the new structure would be floodproof. That's what we had talked about.
That's your compromise?
It was, you know.
A foot and a half floodproofing, or what?
It was to the, I believe the elevation in that neighborhood is nine oh seven eight. So we were going to floodproof to at least that elevation. Being it's a standalone building, we were looking to not do major improvements to the existing buildings, being they, you know, the first building was twenty years old. I mean, they've been there a long time, so.
How much is this project?
Well, we haven't designed it, so we don't know.
Roughly?
I would say seven to ten million. Plus, they're looking to add a lot of jobs in this facility, so.
Okay.
I guess we're open to questions.
Any Commissioners have any questions?
I have one for Bruce.
Okay. Thank you. Bruce?
This is kind of a new approach to floodproofing for your discussion in the prior position of the city. Your understanding of floodproofing, would it align and be acceptable to FEMA? Or is, is that a fair question?
Well, FEMA sets the standards for floodproofing and our allowance to have basements in the city. Tied together. So we create our floodproofing code, nineteen seventy-five, we still use it. And then we have amendments, floodproof guidelines up to twenty fifteen.
Bruce, the question is, if he does floodproofing on his building, would that be acceptable to FEMA?
He's requesting three parts to the variance. The. Admiral.
Well, I'm trying to determine, you know, because this is, you know, I guess with new information. Is it apples and oranges, or is it acceptable to?
If he met elevation, what was the third?
That's where I was coming from, but it seems the elevation is the rule.
Yes.
Or the expectation.
Is this something you guys haven't heard before, that they would floodproof their building?
So, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong here, but, so the, the request is to, for variance of the three elevation requirements. There, there is a provision within the city's floodproofing code to allow for variance. However, I think the concern in the past at least has been, when FEMA granted these basement exemptions, there's kind of an understanding that if you abuse that variance power, it could potentially, they might, you know, could potentially revisit that exemption for, for basements for the City of Fargo.
But this really is apples and oranges for sure, because there is no basement. So, I mean, trying to get to.
There's two, there's two elements that you need to go into there, and is, number one, we're graded in a certain way for our flood insurance. So throughout the city, we're graded. We have too many variances, they may go from a grade, as I understand it, let's say, seven to five. They may downgrade us, and we get a discount because we follow our rules so closely. So we presently get a discount, maybe twenty-five percent, it might drop to fifteen percent. So the two major elements on this is, one, is it going to put at risk our ability to get a discounted rate because we are very rigid about our floodproofing. Number two, the second element, which you're trying to talk about, is that, does FEMA allow basement exemptions? I went to Washington when we did that trip, and we got basement exemptions that our basements could be built for tornado protection, basically is what it is. But the builders still have to have the elevation on the outside of that basement to a certain height, which is forty-one feet plus a foot and a half with freeboard, right? So that's where we presently sit. Now, our clomer basically goes to forty-one. The question is whether we have to continue with a foot and a half of freeboard, which we, we're going to have a discussion about. That's been the Commissioners' concerns. This problem here, I think what we need to understand, we did something for Prairie Psych to build their building, which is below the floodproof level. And we can do a couple of variances, and it starts to add up. Yes, FEMA may get a little alerted to it and say, hey, you guys are giving variances, it's all over. But we're trying to, curious about on this building, if they floodproof the building to an elevation that is protected at the level they're supposed to be at, could that be acceptable, or do they have to bring that bottom up?
To address the question about the other two variances, those were only in the forty-one-foot water surface elevation area. This one is in FEMA, so it is different. City imposed forty-one rules, this is FEMA rules. So the applicant has applied for a variance below what's required. Not floodproof. Otherwise, he wouldn't have had to request a variance for flood. If he was floodproof and showed he could be floodproof, he wouldn't need a variance. So we talked about a variance for the gates and for the exterior elevation. So, no, he requested a variance to the floodproof elevation. The answer is, no, he did not tell us that. He has talked about floodproofing, but the variance doesn't request that.
McCall, did you have something? You seem to stand up, I thought that.
I, I think there's two, I wanted to clarify process-wise. There's a lot of people standing up here, so I'm getting a little nervous. The, I think there's two conversations happening at the same time, so in terms of my role, I'm just trying to provide clarity. I think, yes, this is new information that the applicants are, that the staff is hearing in terms of the proposal to build a separate building that is flood-protected. And so I think if that's a consideration, a separate building, I think that's what I heard Bruce ask as part of his testimony to you. If this is new information, I would suggest continuation. Let the staff and the, and the applicant work out some of those new details and then come back to you in two weeks.
Just whispering to the Mayor, we're going to table this, I'd move to table.
Second. Call vote?
Greenberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. So what we're asking to do is you guys go back, talk to them, and see about this new thing. And then it may not be an application for variance, it may be a new, new project, right? We still have a little time before public hearing, so I'll go to Item forty, forty-three.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, just one item, one item. Could the record reflect that we're tabling it to a time and date certain, that being the next regular meeting? That way, we don't have to worry about.
That's what I said.
Renotising public hearing.
You can interpret, that's what Greenberg said. Glad you could read his mind. Recommendation, I do point Justin Schonberg as to the Board of Appeals. You have a recommendation, is there a motion? Move proof, or second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Greenberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Brenda here? Item forty-four, explanation of the downtown Wi-Fi. I've had numerous of the Commissioners call me because a lot of different people have been very curious about this downtown partnership and other people. And what we're fairly excited about, there's been an offer to have free Wi-Fi downtown, but we have to have rules about that. So Brenda's bringing her friendly Wi-Fi box, that is what's going to go up throughout the city. That's part of the discussion. And for many of us who ever spend any time in civic centers, it's nice that we may have Wi-Fi in there as well, since many of us go into dead zone the minute we go into TEDx. But please, and to the Commissioners, this has been requested by many of you, so that's why I brought it kind of in the item agenda, because there's a time issue here that the persons that want to get this up, want to get it done this fall in time of game day for the Bison, I think. Dave, isn't that right, game day's coming our way? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Again, I apologize, I think there was a little communication internally, too, that this one may be coming forward today, and it wasn't on your agenda. So we did expeditiously work on Friday and try to get some information together for you. And I've got a quick little presentation for you, kind of talk about the things you'll see in there. And then we can go from there. So as of January this year, we did the final reading and adoption of our wireless telecommunications in the right-of-way. And then in January thirtieth, we did approve the land development code updates to support the telecommunication facilities in the right-of-way. And then we also adopted a guidelines and fee structure. That was, the fee structure at that point was only for small cell. Those are the, the companies that we were working with at that time. Since that was adopted, though, we have been approached by a couple of different companies in regards to Wi-Fi in the right-of-way. So the next, what, what you'll see in front of you is we assembled an amendment for the Wi-Fi guidelines, which addresses fees attached to Wi-Fi in the right-of-way. Right now, what we're looking at is, there are some conversations that the Wi-Fi would be free to the public. And then there are some providers that we're talking to that only if you are their customer, would you have access to their Wi-Fi. So what we're looking at is a different fee range, because if it's going to be free to all the public, it's a benefit to our citizens, we feel. And so what we're looking at is possibly twenty-five dollars a year for each unit. And then fifty if they were going to be, only if you use them as a provider. The next thing is, and that's just for Wi-Fi in the right-of-way. This is Midco's Wi-Fi, to kind of give you an idea of what some of them look like. And some of those will be installed on their overhead cable line. And so this would just be a fee attached if they're in our right-of-way but on their own cable. And then the next amendment is if they attach to our pole. So right now, for Midco, we've got ten applications, and seven are on their own wires, and three are on traffic signals. And so dependent on if we can get a separate power source or not, or if they'll use city power, would determine that fee. So it would be an increased fee if they have to use our city power and attach to our traffic signal. And so we also looked at if it was a free Wi-Fi request or if it's going to be only to your specific customer. We did have our, we have a specialist that we've been working with, and they did the study, the, the different communities they've worked in. And Wi-Fi rentals really range from, as you can see, they can go from thirty-six dollars to five hundred dollars. And it's really dependent on, there are a lot of things that the Wi-Fi can do to assist different municipalities. So it depends on how much they're able to use, to work together, and the, the cities can get benefit out of those Wi-Fi antennas also. In working with the IT group, when we were talking with the different providers, they're really, you know, as far as us as a business city, there wasn't a lot of use for us, but there is for the public. So in front of you, this is our most current request for Wi-Fi antennas. There's ten sites on there. And the red ones are ones that will be on overhead lines. And then the green ones are the sites that will be on traffic signals. And I'm just going to kind of quick go through these. The, the circle is the little antenna, but it isn't to size. It's just a image that's put in there, so you can see that. So, for instance, we're looking on the alley between Fifth Street North and Broadway, just north of Fourth Avenue. Around in the spicy pie on Fourth Avenue and Broadway. In Roberts Alley, right along Fourth Avenue. In Roberts Alley between Second and Fourth Avenue. This is actually looking from Robert Street towards the alley there. Second Avenue North and Roberts Alley. Broadway and Second Avenue, that's one that they're requesting to put on our traffic signal. First Avenue North and the alley west of Broadway is Site Seven. Broadway and First Avenue North, that one would be on our traffic signal also. And then Broadway and MP would be on our traffic signal. Oh, and the last one is Third Avenue and the alley east of Broadway. And so that's what we're kind of looking at for different, you know, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at. So that would be, you know, right now, what they're offering is free Wi-Fi to our citizens. And so not all the providers have been offering that. We do have a couple we've talked to, and there, if, when their Wi-Fi antennas come through, those will be just for their providers.
Commissioner Greenberg?
Brenda, just a couple of questions.
Yep.
Do we distinguish between, I see some of those poles, I'm presuming they're XL Energy poles?
Yeah.
And so is there a difference between that location and XL's infrastructure in the city?
So, yes, so what, what, what we have is when they're on their own facility like that on the pole, then they're just asking for their structure to be in the right-of-way. So then, once they attach to our pole, then it's an attachment agreement that will be associated with the Wi-Fi.
With the city or with XL Energy?
With the city.
Okay.
So as far as XL poles, we have nothing to do with that. So for instance, in Roberts Alley, they have three sites there. But we are making provisions to bury, possibly bury those lines one day. And then we'll have to look for different sites when that happens.
So that fee structure that you noted with some of your research, that's consistent with public infrastructure versus private in the case of XL?
Well, so they will, they'll have their agreement with XL. But right now, Midco has like, so for instance, Midco has a cable franchise with us. But since this isn't related to cable, it go, it falls into our telecommunication facility. And so that's where we come into, we have two items that happen. It's the, the right to be in our right-of-way. And so typically, if it was all cable.
Which is XL as well, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And so if it was all cable and cable-related, then let's say this had to do with cable. This is how you got your cable, we wouldn't charge them a thing, because that's part of their franchise agreement. With the Wi-Fi, it now runs into our wireless facilities franchise. And so you'll have a fee for just being in our right-of-way and a permit to be in our right-of-way. So we can track them, because we do have a spacing requirement on how many can go and how close they can be.
And then finally, I don't recall with our small cell agreement. Did that have a time certain for a lookback or a period of time for a term? I don't recall, and if so, or if not, rather, one way or the other, does this action tonight, is this something we should be setting up two, three years from now, just as a, as a review of the technology and the policies based on what can change?
Correct. I think you are completely correct on that. I think the thoughts were that we would bring this back through a committee so that we could reevaluate it. And I can't remember if it was two or three years, but I do, I do remember that, that we were going to bring that back every couple of years. Because this, this is changing so quickly, and things are changing so quickly.
Might have to look at it in a year.
We really need to keep bringing it back.
Well, it's certainly something we want to advance for the community. And, but I just, you know, just my standpoint of having those, those look-back things wise. And if you're saying, and I hear that, or see the heads nodding, that our current agreement, this dovetails into that or bolts on, we have that flexibility, I'm okay.
Commissioner Garrick?
So to piggyback on Commissioner Greenberg, so XL, we charge them a fee to be in our right-of-way with their wire. They kind of own that wire. And then we're going to charge another company to hang something from the wire that we're already charging someone else for. So I mean, I, I think that other cities don't do that, right? They just charge the one time, and it's actually a lesser fee to actually have the wire across. So I think that it's a good idea. I just think we need to look at the payment schedule a little closer and reduce that, because what we're trying to do is encourage more of this, right? If it works out great, we want more of this. If it works out great, we want more of this. So I think having that lower fee would do that.
But we don't, so XL does not pay to be in our right-of-way. They pay a franchise fee. So that's, that's, there is no additional fee other than the franchise fee that they pay.
But Commissioner Gary is correct. There's a great debate on what the yearly rental is, what the installment is, and initially a lot of cities came out with a 500 initially, and then 500 yearly, and a lot of pushback from the companies saying it's unaffordable to do that, and how competitive the market is getting now, that's why you came back with a lower fee ratio. But in XL, they're in our right-of-way to put that box, so the box is really what they're paying to put in our right-of-way.
So, so I know, I know, okay, so I know, when Midco came and did their build-out, and they wanted to go on XL poles, they had to get permission to go on XL poles. And then they pay a pole fee to be on their poles. Now, if they have to pay an additional fee to add that, I don't know, but I know they do pay a fee to have their overhead line on XL poles. And what that did is, because of the downtown and the congestion and everything was overhead at that point, that was the right decision until we start moving some of those utilities underground, or until we reconstruct those roads and we have the ability to get the utilities in there.
Right, and I guess the point here is, I'm all for this, it's going to get approved, I hope, but I think we need to look and talk with businesses more and ask them what the appropriate fee level is that they would then expand into, because this is like a pilot, it's just starting out. But I want to see this in more places, quite frankly, and I think that if we charge $200 per box in this area, you're going to see less of them than if you would if it was less. So we'll just have that conversation in the months and years to come, I suppose.
Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying to get back to the basics. Is this for businesses to rent so they can provide the Wi-Fi to their customers, or is it to the general public?
Nope, it's for the general person walking down the street, and it's, from what I've understood, is it's not meant to go through a building. It's meant for being out in the right-of-way and having access to free Wi-Fi.
On January 17th, when the wind's blowing 38 miles an hour, or 20 below, you'll get it.
That's not a good vision, Tony. Go ahead.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Commissioner Garrick, in response to your question, too, I think that's why all of our fees we've done by resolution also, is, these are very moving targets, it's moving technology. We may be back, and that's why we've been doing it by resolution, because we understand we might be back in two or three months, and some of the things we've also thrown out is, you know, maybe we say 25 bucks and a cap of something. You know, you don't go any more than this, that allows, you know, a few more extra Wi-Fi antennas. So we've, we've thrown out a few different ideas that I think as these companies start putting them up, and we get a feel for, you know, what are we really looking at, too, then we'll, we know we can come back, and we may have to do another amendment and resolution to help keep moving this along.
We have a motion, please.
Move the recommended motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Greenberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Eppcar?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll start on the budget. I think there's some people here that want to testify, so I'd like to give them the time, so.
High school in Oupul.
Call the meeting back to order. Commissioner Greenberg had mentioned that we have some guests here that want to just make a statement about what the significance of the Wi-Fi ordinance that we just passed. Tim Flacco, do you want to start out?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also thank you for letting me know that this was put on as an amendment onto the agenda, otherwise I would not have caught that. So I appreciate the ongoing cities' efforts to kind of try to keep people as informed as possible. I am here, I'm Tim Flacco. I live at 1350 Second Street North, and I'm here in my capacity as the Chair of the Downtown Community Partnership. I have a resolution that I'll be presenting back to you, to the Mayor and the City Commissioners, but just a couple of things and food for thought. Downtown is arguably the most photographed, iconic, signature place we have in Fargo. I'm told that the number one thing that's most photographed is the Fargo Theater marquee. I was just there, two days, when I was there, by there two days ago, there were literally four people going around that were separate from each other, trying to take pictures of it in various poses. And we need successful Wi-Fi access so we can have it for events like game day, street fair, the Fargo Marathon, and they have the ability to increase it and then bring it back down when those events aren't occurring. And I just think that we have to be very careful, you know, and I just couldn't help but think, when we're talking about the right-aways and everything, would, you know, that's almost analogous to saying, if I put something on my house, because they have the right-of-way for XL Energy, if I put something on my house, I have to pay the city for that opportunity to do something, and in this case, to serve the public good. Because again, you're right, when you talk about, it's really designed for people walking down the corridor and in the public spaces, when they get the plaza built and all those kind of things, and it really does serve the general public. It's not to hide in a coffee shop somewhere and use it all the time. Originally, our board had hoped that this would be ready for the street fair. Didn't happen. Then we thought, well, maybe if we can get it in time for the XL Energy Holiday Lights Parade in November. That's 56 working days away from today. The odds of that happening are pretty slim, so my concern is, when we lose this opportunity, they have it in their budget for this year. It's pretty hard for them to go and advocate with other states and other communities that they should keep it in the budget for next year. If they've spent almost an entire year trying to get this resolved, it may go to another community in the valley, or Lawrence, Kansas, or who knows where, that it could go from there on. So if we lose this window, I'm afraid it may not open up for a long time, and then we really lose our opportunity here from pressure from the other communities. And if I may, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have a resolution that if, I would, I would quickly read it to you. It's relatively short.
I remember, Tim, I have a lot of taxpayers here that want to talk.
Yes, and I'll just highlight a couple of the points quickly, because I know, but 75% of all Americans say that having free access to Wi-Fi is important to their daily life, and this can really help bridge the digital divide the lack of access can create. It can help level the playing field for various social economic classes, and that's why the Downtown Community Partnership Board came out in support. We voted 100% in support of this, and we have a high threshold. With all our resolutions, we require at least a 75% vote in support of something before we'll take a position on that. This one was at 100%. So if I may?
Yes, thank you very much. Don't put on the record as well. Justin, you got a few seconds still, something here?
Yes, I just, thank you very much. Obviously, Midco has been very excited to be part of the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, and most importantly, the residents of Fargo. As you know, on August 15th, we finished construction, so now every resident, $75 million invested, so every resident can get services from Midco, and another $75 million, every resident can get gig service from Midco for only $99. So thanks for that. As part of the warm welcome we've received from so many customers, we're looking to deliver downtown Wi-Fi, as Tim and Brenda have accurately described. This, of course, would be, you know, free and open to the public. We currently lease those lines from XL Energy in those seven locations. It is important to be on the traffic signals, to be able to accurately serve Broadway. This is going to be free to all the residents and visitors to our, our city as well. It is about a $200 to $250,000 investment in equipment and infrastructure. That's not including the time that our folks would take to go out and to, and to, and to put that in and install that, and the time that we've spent putting this together. A couple other things I'll just touch on. So for example, in other cities, we pay a total of $105 in a similar city to Fargo, 15 bucks for seven attachments, and we pay nothing to be on the, the power poles and agreements with, that we have with others, because we are currently leasing that space from the other power providers. So that's just touched on a couple other items that Brenda touched on in that, but I think other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
We're good. It already passed, so. Thank you very much. I did want to mention that Tim Flacco said that the Downtown Community Partnership mission is to make downtown Fargo the coolest place on the planet, so keep working on that. We're now going to go to item 43, excuse me, item 42, which is a public comment on the 2017 payable 2018 tax levy and the 2018 preliminary budget. This will be a motion to adopt that budget and propose tax levies. Prior to that, what we're going to do is have an open public comment time. So I assume because of the crowd here, we have some people that'd like to speak. I would ask that you speak, but try to confine yourself to three minutes, just in everybody's best interest, not to like this on all night. The Commissioners have received many comments so far. I have a stack in my office we responded to, so we have many of those already responded or sent back to. So who would like to speak around the tax? So when you come up, just identify yourself and where you live, please, and then go ahead.
My name is Juliette Fichtner. I live at 721 Hackberry Drive. For 2016, we got a 4% increase, and then for 2017, it's showing that we're going to have a 37.9% increase. That's an $80,000 increase in our home's value. I find that hard to swallow for a couple reasons. One, I lived in Arizona for 20 years prior to living here, and we bought a house in 2004 and didn't sell it until 2014. We moved back up here to Fargo and lost $3,500 on that house. It was bought before the bubble. It was sold after the bubble had burst, and I've just been watching it happen here in Fargo, and it's kind of making my stomach turn, because I'm seeing the same things happen here that I watched as a business owner in Tucson, as a community member in Tucson. And I owned a house, my husband owned a house, both of us ended up having to kind of bite it when we sold our houses. My house was bought in '98 and not sold until 2008, and I still took a loss. So when I see this in my mailbox, I just wanted to scream. I brought my children with me, who are on their iPads right now, but trust me, they're They were, they lived in that house with us for a little while in Tucson, and I, on Facebook, have seen people post 100%, 50%, 80%. It amounts to $115.37 extra a month for me. In our house, we use cash envelope system. So it would mean either my gas is gone, my dining out money is gone, my clothing money for my kids is gone, the entertainment money that we take to go to the movies, to go to Skyzone, to go to any local business would be gone. My hair and pedicures would be gone, which is very important to me and my husband, and grocery money, I could lose $115 a month. We live on a budget, and this will greatly affect us if it passes. I don't think it's the right choice, and I think you can see in this room, this is the tiniest drop of people who actually care enough to come down here. I had a hard time fighting this. I didn't even, I went through the library, I didn't know where I was going. This is how important it was to me. I've been a resident for four years. We lived here once before in West Fargo for three years, and it was nice when we sold our house there, because we got a nice little lump, lump sum of money, but now that same house is almost $150,000 worth more that we sold in 2012. So I hope we all agree that it shouldn't go through today. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Marissa Oki. I, I live at 1349 14th Street South in Fargo, North Dakota. I received this letter, as you guys all know, and I actually called the city today, because I said I won't, I wouldn't be able to be at the meeting, because I needed to take care of my children, and so they said, well, write us a letter and bring it to the meeting. Well, I get here, and it's, it's, I got here at 5:30, and there was another meeting going on, so I had nobody to talk to. That was very frustrating to me. I had nobody to get my letter to, to talk to before this meeting actually started. Then I talked in the back, and they said, well, you can leave your letter with us. Well, if the budget gets approved, I can't do that, so I got to stay with my son here. So anyway, this was important to me to bring this to you also. We bought our house in, five years ago, for about $120,000. We were being assessed for $182,300. We do not feel that our house is worth that. When we moved here in, or when we moved here five years ago, they said our house was worth more than what it was. We had the city come, the city came, we showed them our appraisal papers from our, from our house, and they took our, they took our taxes down. So we appreciate that, because what the city was trying to tell us our property was worth was not worth that. I also feel right now that the, our property is not worth what it is trying to be taxed at. So if the city could come to our house, so they could maybe get a fair price for our taxes, we'd appreciate that, but we, right now, we do not feel that our house is worth $182,300. And I have a letter for each one of you, if you would like to have it. Where can I leave it?
Eric.
Okay, thank you very much.
Quick question. Ma'am?
Yes.
You noted, five years ago, it valued $120,000?
Yes.
And then today, or recent, is $182?
Yes.
Did it happen in one year?
No. It was five years ago. Five years ago, when we bought our house.
But it's incrementally been growing over five years, the value?
Yes.
Okay.
So just so taxpayers understand, is the tax assessment, when that was done, that was when your taxes or your value of your house was done? That could be appealed. We're already beyond that. I mean, and Ben, I don't know, can they go to appeal to the county at this point? But the, the valuation part, this is not what this discussion is tonight. The discussion tonight is the budget, the city budget. So we can't change assessments right now, and Ben can tell you what you need to do if you think your value is too high. We listened to about 200 people at the beginning of the year on that, and we did change assessments on many of those people. So Ben, can you explain what we'd have to do on that assessed value?
Yes, any, any requests of the current valuation we have on the property, I would recommend people contact the assessor's office. The county, the city, county, and state boards of equalization have met, but informally, we can still receive appeals in our office. We can come out and take a look at the value, just like we did a couple of years ago, or whenever we did. So anyone who wants to speak to their valuation, I would recommend they contact our office. We'll have an appraiser contact them to maybe go out and take another look at the property and review the valuations.
So please give your letter to him, to Ben, and they can do that? And you can give copy to Eric, so we have copy, okay?
Good evening. My name is Joe Bergam. I live at 514 10th Avenue South. I just wanted to say thanks for all the time and energy that goes into the budget. I had some time to review it today, and there's a lot of detail there, a lot of words, a lot of numbers that go into outlining it. One thought I did have is that, you know, a large portion of the budget is the 90-some million that goes into the operating budget. And with municipal accounting, there are different funds that are allocated in certain ways, and so there's obviously debt service as a portion of it, the funds that are dedicated and set aside for that. I would ask that the annual capital improvement plan be added to the budgeting process. When we're here talking about property taxes and assessments or mills, I know in the current budget, there's a proposed to lower the number of mills, but at the same time, we're not discussing the capital improvement plan, which has huge ramifications against special assessments, debt services, and outlay for the city. That capital improvement plan has been upwards of $100 million. That's more than our annual operating budget, yet it isn't discussed at the same level of detail and public transparency as the budget is. And so I'd ask, as we work on being financial stewards of our community, that CIP is looked at as it relates to budgets, assessments, property taxes, and sort of a holistic approach. I know that there's timing and different things that go into place and how those things are created, but I think it's important that, that $100 million annually that's being spent on capital improvement is talked about during the budgeting process, because it's easy to read through the budget and not see that number, and not understand that that spending's happening. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Richard Hushka. I'm a little disappointed. I was invited to this meeting, and it sounds like this is not where I need to take this up. So I'm not sure what I'm doing here, quite frankly. I'll try to get something done.
Is it the valuation of your house that's gone up? Is that what you're...
Pardon?
The valuation of your house?
Well, what happened here is, I just moved to Fargo, the end of Ju, the end of May, as a matter of fact, we moved, and, and here's the, I've, I've got, I've got what I paid for the house. I live on 21st, 2105 Second Street North, and the valuation that I got in this, on this letter, is $27,000 above what I paid for the house. To me, that, you know, doesn't, doesn't... doesn't add up.
Especially if you just paid for it. But you can give that to Ben, and they can look at it.
Okay.
The gentleman in the back, Ben Hushka, is the assessor's office. He can look at that.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next.
Hello, my name is Dan Rawning. I'm from, I live at 5463 27th Street South. I'm here today just as a concerned citizen as well. Obviously, a lot of people are here upset about their taxes that are being increased a little by little. And this last year, it wasn't just a little chunk that, I've been in my house five years, brought all the paperwork over those five years. The property values have been assessed 45% higher than when I moved in. Now, looking over this, this is not a bill form that you guys do send out. It gives four different dates for taxes that go up. On the back, it explains what the next three meetings are. But I couldn't actually find anything on the front half where the four dates are listed that did explain what was going on at today's meeting. So I apologize. There's probably a lot of people here for the same reason, which were the same reasons of the other people. That being said, as a concerned citizen of, of your city, taxes are going up. And there was a much higher chunk just from property real estate this last month. I did call. I did have an assessor come in. They came in, and they said that the value of your house is correct. I can't cut this down any farther for you. These same houses in all these different parts of the cities are being sold for this amount, and I can get you some paperwork showing that these houses are going for what this amount is. Now, over the five years, it's gone up 46%, like I said. But this last one was, they increased at $45,000 roughly. Okay. For whatever today's meeting is going to end up being in regards to this preliminary budget, you guys have taken a giant chunk this year. And it may be worth it to consider where the taxes are going in the future. Personally, I believe that the city is being a little bit greedy, riding the property value bubble here as it's dropping down. My neighbor's house has been on the market at a little less than what its city evaluated it at for 101 days now. They've dropped prices two different times in that timeframe. So please just consider, whatever else is coming up next, that you took a giant chunk, maybe let the taxpayers have a little, risk bite for a little bit. Thank you.
And we, we think that the assessors are going to drop a little bit this year, so...
Mr. Chairman, can I add one, a couple of points real quick while this gentleman comes up? So I just wanted to point out, so I have my bill. And so we, the city, we dropped the mill levy by two mills. The county dropped it by 8.7 mills. The Park District reduced it by .93 mills. So that's what's gone on. The Fargo Public Schools, was it, they, they stayed the same. The, to me, the, the key thing, if you, if anybody has their bill with them, the key thing, if you look, what's happened the past eight years about was that the state had the buy-down program, and it's about 860 bucks. I live at 2830 Liloak Lane. And so what happened, the last three sessions of the legislature, they promised us that they were going to reform property taxes. They kept promising that they were going to reform it. And what's happened, instead, they used the oil money to buy down our property taxes, which is the easiest thing to do, but it wasn't the most courageous thing to do. And so what's happened is the oil money ran out, and so now the buy-down is over. And so that's the main increase, is if you, if you all have your bills with you, it's $860 in mine that, that went away. That, that's what, that's what's been happening the past 10 years, eight to 10 years. So I'll, that's my, I'm not that bright at financial numbers, so that's Dave's boiled down version of, that we, I'm very proud. Our, our budget was fairly flat, and we dropped the mills by two. I'm, I'm very comfortable with that. Would have, we could have maybe done a little better. But the key kicker is that the state legislature buy-down, that, that is the key number. That's why, so for mine, it looks like I had a 16% increase in my property taxes, but that's the, that's the key reason. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next.
I'd like to follow up on the gentleman that was just here. I'm a little bit off key, too, but I think you'll be really interested. My name is Craig Schnell. I live at 3014 Hickory Street in the Longfellow School District. And my property taxes are going to go up 19.87%. So, there it is. I want to talk to you a little bit about the assessment process. I have gone through with, because there's no other medium where we can do this. And I did meet with one of the appraisers, Teresa Ash was her name. She did a terrific job. Ben, I want to give her a thing, and I met with her a number of times, because I felt that the assessment that happened to my house was out of kilter, et cetera. And so we believe that assessment is based on number of sales, similar places, size of house, location, bathrooms, remodeling, age, et cetera, construction type. Well, it looks like it's pretty complicated. It is. We have to computerize it in order to calculate what we have. But what happened this year in the Longfellow area, and you can go to your data and find the same thing out, was the fact that only one thing counted in the movement of house assessments. And I discovered it by accident. And I thought, hey, what's happening here? All the stuff that I mentioned, size, age, et cetera, went out the door. And this year, if you go through the data and the, and the Longfellow School area, I drove it, wrote down houses, et cetera. One story houses went up 10%. Didn't make any difference, size, age, whatever it was, 10%. Two stories went up 7%. Split levels went up 6.7%, roughly. I'm talking about 90%. And a story and a half went up 12%. Now, if 2%, or two story is 7, and one story is 10, you'd think it would be in between, not above it. That's what happened with, with, with it. This is what has happened over the time. And we're going to compare one house on the south side of a road, three houses on the other side of a street. Okay? House number one. In 2010, compared, when you compare the north to the south, the north was 14,500 less. 2017, it went up to 21,000. So you had a $35,000 change. Second house on the north side, the south side house was $7,400 more in the assessment. 2017, it's now $51,000 more. Seven-year period, $51,000 more. The third house on the north side was, it was down from the house on the south side, 20, let me say it differently. The house on the south side was 26,000 more on the assessment. In 2017, hang on to this one, it was a $148,400 increase. I'll repeat that with new numbers. At once, you're, you're up 25,000. Now you're up 150,000. That's six times change in where you're at. So I think this thing needs to be looked at overall, which has changed things around. So if you want to drive me out of your house, my house, you're doing a good job.
I have a lot of people to talk. I can invite you at the end, so. This is just really a comment period.
My name is Beulah Sanderland. I live at 2102 on 25 and 1/2 Avenue South. Just going to start by making a point to follow up on his. What I think of the assessment process, I think is run amok. For an example, my house is 36 years old, has never had any updates. Last year, the assessed value increased by $67,000 in one year. In the past three years, it's increased $87,800. Now, either I haven't been paying my share of taxes, or I'm getting gorged now. And I think there's got to be some looking into what is going on. We're hearing it all the time. And I think we've, we've had enough of it. Now, I want to express my concern and my feelings on how I think the city has taken advantage of this aggressive assessment process of our property values. They're taking advantage of us. The rapidly growing population and the ever-expanding footprint of the city is taking a significant bite out of my purchasing power. The continued process of low-density growth, which has created a never-ending expanded infrastructure, ever-increasing city services, has all resulted in an increased cost to city taxpayers. It's become totally out of balance as to where it would be if the city government would adopt a policy of filling in open spaces with areas that already have existing infrastructure. The city's growth is perpetual. It's created a momentum all of its own. The need for growth incentives is no longer needed, including expansion of property taxes, I'm sorry, exception of property taxes for new homes, tax breaks for home builders, tax breaks for developers, tax breaks for new business. The runaway assessed values must be offered by lowering your mill levies. We need zero increase in our taxes, with, of course, the understanding that you've got inflation to cover. Most increased costs for homeownership from year to year can be controlled, such as insurance policies, mortgage costs, because they can do a little shopping amongst entities that provide these same services on a competitive basis. There is no offsetting competitor for taxpayers as far as our tax billing. The recent tax increases for established homeowner, and especially for retired homeowners, has become a true nightmare. You wake up one morning, and you're paying $870 a year more in taxes. That's a nightmare. Just to prove that, I'm quoting from the forum opinion page written by Andy Peterson, president and CEO of the Greater North Dakota Chamber. He referenced the economic impact of a possible health insurance tax that would have on individuals and small businesses if Congress fails to act on health reform. Mr. Peterson writes, "Families will see an increase of 450 to 500 per year." He continues to write, "This tax will make a significant dent in the wallets of many families and will result in consumers having less disposable income," end of quote. Mr. Peterson refers to this increase to one's cost of living as significant. Likewise, my $870 increase in one year is significant. We are at the mercy of you, our government, who seems focused and fixated on growth and more growth. I'm asking for more consideration of the citizens and the taxpayers who make their homes here in Fargo. City government has to show that they have faith, confidence, and believe in what Fargo has going for itself. Without meddling in the economic structure, the city does not have to buy its way into prosperity. Adjust the mill levy to zero tax increases, or adjust your budget. Give us some tax relief. That's my opinion, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you. Just so we don't have applause on and off, we're not going to have that, please. Next one, please. Somebody else wants to speak?
Hi, my name is Deena Maxwell, and I live on 5th Avenue in South Fargo. And I know in the last five years, our taxes with this one will have increased almost $600 a year. My husband's on disability, like she was saying. This affects our budget. Maybe it's time for you guys to figure out a budget. You know, you look at, you go into the Department of Motor Vehicles, they have reclaimed barn wood, barn doors. Maybe it's time for everybody to adjust their budgets.
Thank you. So just speaking to that, this year's budget is, operating budget is 95% of what last year's budget was. So we have adjusted our budget downward just for that issue. The other gentleman was talking about mill levy reduction. All the entities have 11.63 reduction in mill levies. So locally, we have decreased mill levies.
Yeah. My name is Andrew Froelich. I live at 1422 South River Road. And what I, I just want to speak just briefly about the fact that I've been retired from NDSU since July of, of 2014. I've lived in Fargo for 45 years, paid my taxes. I have three children who've all graduated from the Fargo school system. And I'm wondering if the commission doesn't see the possibility of putting a freeze on the level of property tax for people who are retired or of a certain age like other communities do. It seems really regressive that, that, for people who are retired, who have a fixed level of income from either pensions or investments, and social security, which hasn't increased and keeps at a certain level, yet the property tax keeps increasing, it seems totally unfair. I know, I have friends in Oklahoma, for example, who have their property tax frozen because they are retired. And the same thing for Texas. There are quite a few other states that have the same thing. I did some research. And it's also compounded by the fact that North Dakota is one of 13 states which taxes your social security. The other states do not tax social security. So it seems really, we are, you know, rather greedy, is the way, the way I would phrase it. So I was wondering if there's been any thought, for example, for Fargo, putting a freeze on retirees' property tax once they've attained either a certain age or have been retired for maybe a period of time? That, you know, because after a while, if the, the taxes keep going up at a certain increment, it makes us wonder whether we want to be able to stay in, in the city of Fargo at least.
So Dan, Molly, stand up. There is a Homestead Act that does help that out. So on some people on income levels, if they cannot pay their taxes, you can stand up down so they can see you, get your card and everything else. So if people are limited in their income, we do have a program that is available for that. We will take under advisement to your other question if they're retired.
Um, I-
The other item on that we have difficulty with right now is when people retire, it used to be fairly predictable when they die. But now, if you retire at 55, you might live to 90. So that's, that will be part of that discussion that would be had to held. And that's something the commission, we could look at.
Has that income level been adjusted at all?
It was four years ago, I believe.
And is that readily available?
And that's legislatively.
Okay. Well, that, that was my main point, that I think that there should be some sort of a, a freeze at, at some point so that one can count on a certain level to be able to pay at the end of the year.
City Fargo has two humps in age, and one hump is baby boomers. So we do have that problem. And there's a very big concern by the commission for people who are retired. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If, you'd be so kind, if somebody wants to speak next, could they just get a wall next to the wall here so we'd have it, so we don't waste time of people coming forward?
Good evening.
Then I have an idea how many more people want to speak, so. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Dean Eggermott. My home's at 1402 Broadway. I'd like to begin by thanking you for the work you do. I understand it's extremely difficult, and I want to thank you for having this meeting tonight. I'm not quite sure why people aren't waiting out in the parking lot to get in here, but that's another issue. I do feel that my home is, is currently priced above its, the ability, my ability to sell it right now. And I understand that. I'm also appreciative of the fact that Broadway's been closed for all of summer with a major construction project, and I appreciate that very much. I understand the expanding infrastructure needs, and they, they're not paid for overnight. I would like to ask that continued perseverance with the- I would like to ask that continued perseverance with the budget and its expansion, and that continued really good decisions are made going forward, and that we are voicing our concern, and our coffers are limited as well. Thank you.
I don't normally speak in public. My name is Jackie Jant. I live at 1610 Sixth Street South. And I just want to use two indicators to maybe put this into some perspective. So I had a 12.24% increase. That doesn't seem like very much, right? But consider this. If you gave, if you got a raise for 12.24%, you'd be jumping through the roof, right? The other thing that I'd like to say is, is that inflation is normally 3%. Again, 12.24, way out of line. So that's all I really have to say. It's kind of out of line.
My name is Tom Koopich. I live at 1162 Eagle Park Drive, South Fargo. I've been in Fargo 77-plus years. I owe $160,000 on my house. It ain't paid off. I don't get a government check. I live off my savings, 401K, and Social Security. I wish I had a fixed pension like the government people that bleed the system. But anyway, my taxes went up $1,100 this year. Flood insurance I didn't know, I didn't need when I moved in. Well, I pay an extra $600 for that now. I don't need it just because FEMA or whatever is making us pay it. And if I didn't pay it, the bank would take my home, wouldn't they? And I was born in this town. And I'll tell you another thing, these schools that you build, luxuries. You can drive around Fargo and see the wasted land on these new schools, hundreds of acres that are never used. The ball fields are empty. Why don't we build some houses on that land? What a waste. Then we'd get some property taxes, wouldn't we? We wouldn't have to go so far out there. But am I supposed to sell my house now and move out of town at 77? And I was born here with 10 brothers and sisters? You know, it's ridiculous. And we've got to stop these raises for these public school teachers. They're not overpaid. They work eight months, they're done at 3:00. It's not 1950, when I went to school and the teachers were very good. It's a system that they like, $72,000, $75,000 a year for an elementary teacher. That's only about eight, nine grand a month. How many people make that? Average person, 30 thou? But it's ridiculous. I have a brother retired from the Highway Patrol. Fine. He gets 95% of his pension, or what he made. 95%. You know, I'm not against him, but it's just ridiculous. 95% and retire when you're 52, 53, and live another 40 years. How stupid are we? We talk about it all the time. Nothing's ever done. And the kids aren't getting smarter today than when I grew up or you grew up. This is, all they do is text. And they don't vote. It's just like our last election. When was it? Last spring? We had an election, was it last spring? One out of six people voted, city of Fargo. One out of six. Just like here, they said, people should be waiting in line, but they're uninformed, they don't give a squat. But here it is. I'm paying 1,800 more a year now for my flood and my flood insurance and my tax of 1,100 this year, and I owe $165,000 on my house, which is about $300,000. That's it, that it's worth. It's ridiculous. But like I say, we sit here and roll it over, and it seems to me it's like the federal government, the same thing, fighting the Democrats against the Republicans or whatever. But, you know, and I've seen Fargo grow. It's great, but it's getting too big. And it's just like here. Why should my paydown with the, what the government, or Bismarck, no, Bismarck was giving me $400? Now it goes to Lucian Social Services? Huh? Why does it go there? And we talk about nonprofits. Well, the head of Lucian Social Service, the gal, she makes 144 grand a year. $12,000 a month. That's nonprofit? You know, I could go on and on, you know? But that's all I want to say.
Hi. My name is Kim Gold. I just bought my first home as a single person at 55, after 20 years of divorce. I purchased in August, and less than a week of my being in my new home, I got this letter. I bought this home as a single person who, at 55, works 2.5 jobs, on a leap of faith because I needed a place for my family to gather in the years to come, because there's no one else that's going to be there. I'm the family matriarch, no. And I don't see that at 60, and 65, and 70, I'm going to be able to continue working 2.5 jobs. I'm going to be lucky if I can do the one. So I'd like to be a part of this growing economy and purchasing things and making things better, but with these type of things happening, I only see myself going backwards. Thank you for your time.
If you're the last one, yes, you can ask a follow-up question.
What I also wanted to ask when I was up here is, I noted that you guys have been giving a lot of money away to FedEx and to, oh, I'm sorry, I have a brain injury. I can't remember everything, but I've been watching it happen in the news. So how much is that affecting the fact that you have to raise all these property taxes to keep the budget going? That's what I wanted to know.
One of the biggest tax exemptions is new home buyers. There's $90 million in the city, which is new home buyers. They get a $150,000 deduction for their homes, but they pay more than that. They pay taxes and everything else. When you look on tax exempt projects, it's less than 1% of our property. It pays back at $2.5 million every year. It's a 30-to-1 return on investment. When you look at downtown, what happened is with the tax incentives, we've gone from $150 million worth of property to 600. All those pay taxes. Present Block Nine pays $45,000 worth of taxes. When the project is done, it pays close to three-quarters of a million. So what happens on all our tax exempt is the payback. If you actually, historically, look at city of Fargo, it's a 30-to-1 payback. The property that started at 10 million is now worth 300 million. Those properties pay taxes. So we do see an improvement with that. On tax exemption, there's a variety of tax exemptions. There's tax exemption for vets, there's tax exemption for homestead, there's tax exemptions for daycare centers. There's a variety of tax exemptions that everybody benefits from. So it's always the debate, but the real issue here is that tax values went up. Everybody's valuation has gone up. The city of Fargo's seen valuation changes, double digits in the last two years, and that's what we're suffering from. You have a growing city that's doing well. Do we hope for a correction this year? Yep, we do. We really hope this year we don't do that anymore, because it's exactly what we have heard from every taxpayer. All of us have received notices from people. Mr. Pepcorn's comment is correct. The state used to buy down 12%. You're automatic, you can have 12% more on your budget. It's just, it's a fact of life, and that's what has happened in that. So it's difficult. We feel your pain. We're hearing it. I mean, but the city budget is something different. We have to pass the city budget, or what we're trying to do. We've kept the city budget flat. We have not taken advantage of all that growth. We actually have a 95% operating budget from last year, so we've decreased our operating budget. We've kept our capital investments way down. We have a really slim budget right now. So if you look at the city budget, we've done everything we do to keep your taxes down. So there's a slight debate on the commission, which we'll talk about in a minute, and we'll hear that. Commissioner Gary.
Just a quick question. 7%. That's how much you're paying for incentives. If you look at your tax bill right now, 7% of that is solely for incentives for someone else.
It's not 7%. It's asked reported by the Fargo Forum. I'm not going to get into debate tonight. We'll close public hearing. Is there a motion?
I still move.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, I would, go ahead.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the audience and citizens whom we serve. I think that all of us in this room, and everybody knows, all those who aren't in this room, knows that there's a challenge with assessments and with specials. Special assessments as well, I think, is as big an issue as assessments. But this is a state statute we deal with, and I think our solutions somehow have to come through our relationship with the state, or the folks who majored two or three years ago wanted to eliminate property taxes. But it's, this is out of our purview as a city. Now, we can, and I think our city, even though it's growing, is, we can balance our budget and make it as tight and frugal as we can, given the needs, like law enforcement needs, public safety needs, which are really pressing. We all know that, too. Which is one more minor reminder, and, you know, I'm going to defend our public schools. I'm going to defend our public quality of life in Fargo. I'm going to defend our condition of our neighborhoods, relatively speaking, our curbs, our gutters, our sewers, our trees, our water, our everything. You know, we've got a great city going for us here, but we do have some challenges. And I challenge the commission and all of us to go forward and study how do we address specials? And how do we address the assessment increases in this bubble that we're seemingly in, and there's a risk to that bubble? But last, I'll just note that the city's budget and the park district's budget and the county's budget are less than the school district's budget. So the city's just a small part of the overall budget assessment you see. But I think it's safe to say, we all hear you, and we know this is a concern of our citizens. And the issues of assessments is huge, and I'll add to that special assessments.
Jimber.
Yeah, just following a couple comments. I appreciate your comment about your experience in Arizona. You know, one of the steadfast approaches that the finance community and the banking community has in our markets, we've never been into that subprime lending game, and so traditional, you know, down payments, you know, build that equity. And so I hope that we're never going to be in that situation. And to add to, Commissioner Pepcorn, I almost called you Senator. Commissioner Pepcorn.
Freudian slip.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that the county decided to do this year, one year ahead of the legislative mandate on the letters that you received, is to start doing it now. And I think that is healthy so that there's full transparency on what is going on with valuations as well as the assessment. And so I look at our responsibility here for what we've done with the city budget. You know, our discussion started months ago, and I remember one of the particular conversations was that we need to really rein in our spending and have a goal of trying to achieve a 95% budget, knowing that the challenge is coming with the state and the county, in particular with the school district is putting forward in a recent vote. All that bundled together is a dollar in your pocket. And so our decision, as Commissioner Strand has alluded to, is, you know, the legislature needs to, I think I agree with Commissioner Pepcorn, even though I was one of those for many years, it's the process of assessment and methodology that is the real challenge statewide between rural and urban to come up with a new, modern formula. And I agree, it's archaic. The formula in the state of North Dakota is archaic. But what the legislature has done over the last 68 years is with the wealth, is given money back. And that wealth isn't what it was, once was, is why we're dealing with this issue. And so your voices are very important to be heard, and that needs to continue as the interim studies look at this whole methodology. There's nobody better versed in this audience than Ben Huskha with the city of Fargo on the methods that we apply. We heard last year that, you know, we understand valuations are going to go up, but in, I think what we've improved upon is, rather than one big jump every five years, it's now more gradual. But it's following the state, when the city gets to the opportunity, and it has to follow state statute. So I think we have a good budget for the city of Fargo, what we're responsible for, but more work has to be done to solve this challenge, not only here in Fargo, but statewide.
Commissioner Gary.
All right. So the proposed preliminary budget has a two-mill reduction, which is good. That's about 3.8% of your Fargo share of property taxes. If all the following suggestions that I'm going to go over here are approved, I can do 10%. And we won't lose any kind of services. We're going to hire the same amount of people. Everything will be just fine. So my goal, I'm not going to ask for 10% reduction, I'm going to ask for about 5.5% reduction, which is three mills. The first suggestion I have is unallocated. Unallocated budget means that whatever we didn't spend this year just rolls over to next year. On average, we do about 2% to 3% unallocated goes to the next year's budget. That is anywhere between $1.8 million this year to $2.7 million if it was 3%. And our budget, we're suggesting it'll be about 1/2% this year, for some reason. If we just bump the unallocated up to its average, or even below its average, we could reduce a mill out of property taxes. That's the first suggestion. The second is the COLA, the cost of living increase for our employees. My plan was to give the bottom third a 3% increase, the middle third a 1% increase, and the top third, no increase at all. If you make over $85,000, no increase for you. The plan in the budget is a 2% across the board. If you do my plan instead of the mayor's plan, we can cut one more mill out of property taxes. The Link FM is $100,000. It underperforms, it has consistently. If we cut that, we can cut your mill by a percentage. The Arts and Social Services Fund is about one mill. It's a charity fund. We, you pay taxes so that the government can take your money and give it to the charities that we find important, right? So my nephew has autism. There's a charity for that here in Fargo, the Autism Center of Fargo. They get nothing from that fund, but art centers get $200,000 some thousand dollars. Well, that may be important to you, but I think that should go other places, right? So why do we, as a city, take money for charity through your taxes and give it away the way we see fit instead of the way that you see fit when you give charity? If we accept all of these, we can lower your bill by 10%, or your city portion of your bill by 10%. So I'll make a motion to cut the Link FM.
Did you make a motion to have all those things?
Nope, just Link FM.
Link FM. Is there a second? Hearing no second, motion dies for lack of a second.
I make a motion to move our unallocated from $600,000 to $1.1 million.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, motion dies.
I make a motion to accept the COLA plan that I laid out and get rid of the plans in the budget currently.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, motion dies.
I make a motion to end the Arts and Social Services Fund.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Your property taxes are not the only taxes going up. In this budget, we have rate increases for utilities. So if you're low-income, if you live in an apartment, or anyone else, if you use water in a sewer, your taxes are going up. I am liaison for utilities. I object to this increase. We have asked folks to invest heavily in our utilities. We've, we're going to expand the sewer plant. We expanded the water plant greatly. We've partnered with other communities. We've done a lot of great things in utilities. I'm extremely proud of that team. Your, the response that we have for you investing in our city is we're going to increase your taxes. So I make a motion to have no increase in utilities this year.
Is there a second? Dies for lack of a second.
Okay. Bruce, you want to come up real quick? This is the prelim budget for 2018. August 2, 2017 is the date on this book. Has anything changed in this book since that date?
To my knowledge, that is what was presented.
We were asked to give inputs as commissioners publicly in this room, to give inputs on the budget. We did. And none of them, none of them were accepted. So when you ask the government to be more responsible, when you ask them to listen to you and give inputs and call us and email us, nothing. We don't listen a bit, and you guys need to understand that.
In response to that, we did listen to your commission, Commissioner Gary's recommendations, and did evaluate them and decided not to do that. On the unallocated, we've already taken a big bite out of the unallocated that's in this year's budget. We are taking more than we normally take. On your recommendation for the COLA action, when I looked into it in 2016, about 47% of the people in the low bracket in about 47%. the people in the low bracket and about 45% of the middle bracket have left this institution. When you move to this year, it's more in the second tier had left us, and that's our firemen and police. So we actually found that what you're trying to fix in the lower end doesn't work, and we think our pay mix works fairly well, and we're going to do a market survey this year in regards to that. For you others, I won't comment, but every one of your recommendations was looked at. The budget team looked at it as a team, and we're solid in our budget, we like our budget, and we feel that this is the best budget to put forward, so. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Gary? Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Popcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Now, we're going to go back to item nine. I think Commissioner Popcorn, you asked us to pull this one. Bid award for project WA 1510.
Right, and I, and I know Tony's on that committee, and my main reason that I had it taken up the consent agenda, just because it's a large number. It's over $2 million. I support, but maybe you can explain a little bit of what went on there? And even though the North Dakota Water Commission is a substantial part, our share is still 857,000. So I just wanted to know the reasoning behind it and what was going on. So, thank you.
Okay. I'm Troy Hall, Water Utility Director. I have with me Richard Wagner of A2S, so he's been helping with the project. And what this project is, it's Project WA 1510. It's Cheyenne River Pump Station improvements, and what that pump station does is it transfers water from the Cheyenne River to our treatment plant, and that's what it is. So the, these are improvements, and we, what we did is, and we'd actually like to continue this and bring, look at this a little bit further and bring it back in two weeks. However, what we do is, we have, we bid as four different contracts. One, Contract 1 is general, Contract 2 mechanical, Contract 3 is electrical, and then Contract 4 is combined, general, mechanical, and electrical. And in this particular bid, we actually didn't have a mechanical bidder, so we couldn't calculate the total combined of 1, 2, and 3. And then we took the lowest combined, is what we're looking at.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just, it's not that I oppose it, I just wanted you to know that, but I just, to me, the other discussion is, the consent agenda, to me, is for technical things and smaller amounts. $2 million, that's, I don't know if that's appropriate for us to be on the consent agenda. So that's just, it's not that I oppose it, I think it's a great project, but I just, when it's that number, so, thank you.
Kimber, take note that maybe on the bigger budgets, he'd like a just regular agenda, so we can look at him. And maybe 1 million, 2 million, something like that?
We can, yeah, we can. Frankly, I agree with you. I mean, that's a huge number, and I love talking about utilities, so let's put it on the regular and flush it out.
Thank you.
I move to continue until next meeting.
I'll second it.
All right. Thank you.
We're continuing it because of what? It's not ready, or?
I'm sorry. We'll bring it back in two weeks, is what we'd like to do. Just revisit. Okay. Thanks.
First and second, roll call vote, please.
Popcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Number 11 is a change order increase of $66,000 for BP 0031 Fire Station Number 1 Headquarters Reboot Project.
Once again, I apologize for pulling this off, especially to all the Vikings fans, if whatever, the number they're up to. But it's the same thing, and if you don't mind, I'll just, my main thing is, it's a new improvement, it's a great facility, but should have this been caught by the architects or designers ahead of time, when it's brand new? And so that's my question to you.
Just for the public data, please explain what the change was. It has to do with air handling, right?
And maybe I can explain it a little bit better, Commissioner Popcorn. There's two issues that we're dealing with with this change order. The first one was, there was a miscalculation by the mechanical consultant for the project, and a number got, the wrong number got entered in. And we didn't notice that there was a problem until this winter. The area where the clerical staff works and where the historic fire truck are, we couldn't get it warmed up, and we came to find out, when we looked back into things, there was an error in there. So the fix there is to add some air handling and radiators and air movement through there to kind of help with everything in there. And for that part, the mechanical consultant is absorbing part of the cost of that change. We're still paying for some of the materials and things like that that go along with that, because we would have paid for that in the first place, but they are absorbing a portion of that cost. The second is, if you remember, about four years ago, shortly after I arrived here as the fire chief, our boiler went out at the fire station there, so we put a brand-new one in. And so when we went through the project, we had the stipulation of, you know, we really spent $65,000 on this boiler, we really like to keep it if we can. And when we did that, it all worked great, but how the system was designed, and I'm not the mechanical engineer, and I'm the wrong guy to tell you how that works, but somehow the air conditioning system and the heating system worked together to balance the temperature in the building. Well, with that large of a boiler system that we have in there, it was too big to run in the summertime. So what we're proposing is that we put a smaller 390,000 KW boiler in there to run, and what we're hearing from some of the different manufacturers, that that will actually be a reduction in fuel costs, and hopefully it will pay for itself over the next three to five years, so.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Gary?
Yes.